Is Councillor Bowler on the line?
He was.
He was on the phone.
I see him. Looks like he was muted.
Yes, I am here.
Okay.
He muted himself.
All right, I hope everyone can hear on the phone. I'll try to speak a little bit louder than I normally would at a meeting. Today is, it's noon, Friday, March 27th, 2020. We have a special city council meeting in regards to the COVID-19 pandemic. According to Minnesota statute, 13D dot zero two one allows meetings to be conducted by telephone or other electronic means under the following conditions. One, the mayor determined an in-person meeting or meeting conducted under section 13D point zero two is not practical because of a health pandemic. Number two, the mayor and all councillors participating in the meeting can hear one another and all can hear in discussion. Councillor Bowler, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Attendance by the public is not feasible due to health pandemic. At least one member of the city council is physically present at the meeting unless unfeasible due to health pandemic. We do have four of the council members present and our other council member can hear us and we can hear him. All votes are conducted by roll call, so each member's vote on each issue can be identified by and recorded. A phone meeting is scheduled in the event of the city council being unable to attend a meeting to be held on March 27th, 2020 at noon in person. The public can dial into the city council meeting using the following. The dial-in number and the access code that those that have got on the line can use. At this time, I will call the meeting to order. We will do roll call. We'll start with Councillor Deitch and work our way through and ending with Councillor Bowler, which is online.
Councillor Deitch, here.
Councillor Nelson, here.
Mayor Droba, here.
Councillor Kraus, here.
Councillor Bowler, here.
All right, thank you. The first item is under old business. We're going to review the Governor Walz's Executive Order 2020 and the Koochin County Declaration of Emergency. Administrator Anderson, do you want to just go over the higher points of that or is this just for information purposes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is for information purposes. I think the point relevant for this meeting and the agenda items is that, as you pointed out, Governor Tim Walz has declared a series of emergency executive orders. His most recent one is 2020, and that directs all Minnesotans to stay at home. I won't elaborate any further on that because it's covered very well through all media sources. The other piece of information I wanted the council and the public to be aware of is that on Tuesday, the county board had met and they had adopted a resolution declaring an emergency. And so I provided the copy that was forwarded to me by the county administrator Jenny Herman, and so I've just provided that in your packet for background information.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions on Governor Walz's executive order declaring a peacetime emergency? All right, any questions with regard to the Koochin County Declaration of Emergency? Hearing none, we'll move on to item number two. Item number two is to consider the adoption of resolution proclamation and declaration of an emergency due to COVID-19 health pandemic with exhibits and discussion of associated issues. Exhibit A is the Infectious Disease Continuity of Operations Plan. Administrator Anderson.
Thank you again, Mayor and council. As you pointed out, we've drafted a proclamation and a declaration of emergency, and this is again due to the COVID-19 health pandemic that's been declared as a pandemic at a national level and a national declaration of emergency has been declared, as well as the state of Minnesota's governor, Tim Walz, has declared a declaration of emergency for the state of Minnesota. So we've identified several factual information pieces in the beginning of the particular proclamation and resolution, and it identifies a series of orders that were taken by those government officials, as well as the pandemic scenario that we have nationally as well as locally. And I heard on the media this morning that the number of cases in the United States now exceeds any other country in the world. So it is a global pandemic and we are feeling the effects in the state of Minnesota and beyond. So the role or the purpose for this declaration of emergency is primarily to allow the city of International Falls to be the recipient of any state and federal programs that might be forthcoming in the future to offset any expenses that the city of International Falls incurs as a result of this declared pandemic and any actions that we take to try and address the pandemic scenario here in International Falls. Again, it's also in place to allow some speed and flexibility at an administrative and on a day-to-day basis so that the staff can respond to the council's directives immediately and with deliberation any issues that we have to put forward as the conditions surrounding the pandemic change on a day-to-day basis. As the council is aware and the public is aware also is each day Governor Walz is conducting media sessions to try and inform the public about conditions as they change. And he's had, again, 20 different declarations of emergency since the outset of this particular pandemic. The attachments have been added, and so there's, again, some findings of fact, and then there's a declaration for the city council to consider. And again, that would be authorized by Minnesota statutes, Chapter 12, which would allow the mayor to declare a local emergency, and then the city council must consent to that within three days. The city council had met back on March 16th and had established several procedural things that the city of International Falls had to move forward with effective March 17th, the next day. And so those are laid out in this particular resolution. And Exhibit B to the resolution, and so it's codified and put in written form. The Exhibit A is a document that I've assembled and based on information that's available in other communities and other local governments, and it's designed and it's titled Infectious Disease Continuity of Operations Plan. And the county has a group, an emergency management team, that's been meeting and communicating countywide on at least a weekly basis. The county has a emergency management plan, and the city of International Falls has an emergency management plan. This particular Exhibit A is designed to have the council approve and introduce actions that we might need to take that are specific to a pandemic scenario or any other infectious disease and establishes how we're going to maintain a continuity of operations and plan moving forward. Currently, both the emergency management plan for the city and the county are lacking any detail regarding that type of a disaster, if you will. So we've wanted to outline those particular steps and levels that we can take as part of this pandemic, and so staff has reviewed this. I think staff is on board and supports the information that's been included in the resolution and proclamation, as well as the attachments. And we're suggesting that the city council adopt this with any changes that you may feel is appropriate based on public input or based on your personal experiences in trying to address this for our citizens. So without going into more detail, that's kind of a background on what we have in place here, and we see the declaration of emergency being declared in the city of International Falls is opening up some financial resources to the city via the state and federal government, as well as providing us some additional latitude and authority to make changes at a department level as we see fit, depending on the outcome of this pandemic.
Before we officially put a motion or a second on this, is there any questions from the council members on the resolution that's been brought forward or any questions for the city administrator? All right, then at this time, I would accept a motion for the resolution for the proclamation and declaration of an emergency due to the COVID-19 health pandemic and the exhibits associated.
So move.
We have a motion by Councillor Deitch. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councillor Nelson. Any discussion from the council? Administrator Anderson.
Mayor, I'm sorry for interrupting the proceedings, but I do want to point out that I do have one discretionary issue that I would like to have the council discuss as part of this motion before it's voted on, and that is on page two of four of the Infectious Disease Plan or the Exhibit A to the resolution. I've left a blank and I'm seeking clarification from the city council. So this resolution, again, declares that the Emergency Management Director by title and role will be the fire chief in and for the city of International Falls. Our plan talks about the mayor being in charge of and heading the application of resources with input from the Emergency Management Director and then has some succession as the police chief to follow if there were to be some reason that the fire chief can't serve in that capacity. So the question here would be who would be the most appropriate person to insert in this sentence, which reads, "The decision for implementing any level of response rests with the..." blank, and I've inserted it could be the mayor, it could be the city administrator, it can be the Emergency Management Director, as directed by the city council. So I'm asking the council to consider who best should assume that role for declaring what level of response we're in based on this, the findings and the responsibilities in this exhibit.
Council's thoughts?
I guess I would like to amend and appoint the mayor in this position.
Okay, we have a motion to amend. Is there a second?
I would second the amendment.
We have a second from Councillor Nelson. Any discussion on the amendment to put the mayor in that role?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Not saying that you're not capable, but do you feel that this is a role that you can handle along with your employment?
I think I could, but with that being said, I don't think that I would be doing it alone. I would look at it as a figurehead position and be working with, directly with the others that are stated there. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be me, it wouldn't be the city administrator, it would be that as a team, and that's how I would look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussions on the amendment? Hearing no other discussion, we will do a question. It'll do a roll call vote, starting with Councillor Deitch.
Aye.
Do I say my name first?
Sure.
Councillor Nelson, aye.
Councillor Kraus, aye.
Councillor Deitch, or Councillor Bowler, that would be you next.
Hey Walt. Councillor Bowler.
And I would vote yes. Motion carries four for the motion, zero against the motion. Next, we will go to the main motion, which would be to accept the resolution with the amendment. Any other discussion on the resolution with the amendment? Hearing none, I will call a roll call vote, starting with Councillor Deitch.
Aye.
Councillor Nelson, aye.
Councillor Kraus, aye.
Councillor Bowler?
Does he know that...
Hey Walt.
Star six to unmute.
He's on mute.
And I will vote yes. The motion carries four for, zero against. Next item we have is to consider other action items for local implement... I can't do it. Big words get me. So we'll go to local boat accesses. The conversation had been started at, in Lake of the Woods between Bedette and Lake of the Woods. It has moved on to Koochin County with closing some of the boat ramps. There are two boat ramps in the city limits of International Falls. One would be at Pat Roach Landing, which is at Voyager's National Park, and the other one would be a DNR-owned landing, which is at Shorewood Drive. With that being said, Pat Roach Landing, I think we have 100% the opportunity to close that if we wanted. Is that accurate? Administrator Anderson?
It is, yes.
And the DNR-owned one at Shorewood Drive is a little bit different. It is, it is DNR-owned, however, we maintain that property. And I think that, given the set of circumstances, that there is snow that is blocking it, we have put up a roadblock over top of it right now, I would suggest, in the time being, that we make the choice to close those two landings. But I also open it up for discussion first. If there's anyone that wants to have any discussion that would be pertinent to the boat landings. We'll start with Councillor Kraus.
Mr. Mayor, I have to be honest. I don't take this lightly. The, you know, born and raised in International Falls, springfishing is, it's in my blood. It's something I've been doing since I was little. I, as much as this hurts, I see no other alternative at this point. Springfishing, anybody that's been, and I understand the county's take on it, anybody that's seen the line at any of the boat landings, I don't think it would be smart for us to keep our boat landings closed while Lake of the Woods County and Koochin County have closed all of their landings. Again, I cannot stress enough how serious I take this, and this is not an easy decision, but I feel that to protect the citizens of International Falls and the greater area, that we need to close our boat landings to prevent people from trying to come up here and utilize them.
Anybody else have anything to add to that?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
It would be my suggestion if we move forward with that. I know in the county, they're already having issues with folks moving the barricades and going around them, so I'd ask if we've got any, if we have the ability, if we could put some sort of sturdier barricade that they can't just shuffle around and get around, because inevitably, that's what's going to happen.
I would agree with you wholeheartedly. And one of the pieces to this is I'm not nearly as avid as a fisherman as some of the other people that I've spoke to, and definitely not as much as Councillor Kraus. The reality is, is we're not doing this to stop locals from being able to go fish. Hopefully, our local community has access to some private opportunities to get onto the river. This isn't to deter people from going fishing or utilizing the properties and the waters that we have up here. The goal of this is to try to limit transportation of people to our area. It's not that we don't want to have tourism up here. We want tourism. We have always tried to put our hats on tourism in northern Minnesota, but this is about health. This is about, in the event that the pandemic does hit here, being able to get the people to the hospitals, being able to not overrun our abilities in International Falls area. I don't take this lightly either. I think that this is a good approach, and this is a temporary thing. Hopefully, we get past this and we move forward and we open up the landings and everything is the way it was before. And to be honest, I'm scared it won't be the same as it was before, but we still have to make decisions that are for the health and well-being of our community. With that being said, I would, I would accept a motion to close either one or both or neither of the local boat accesses.
I move to close both boat accesses.
Okay, we have a motion by Councillor Kraus to remove, to close both boat accesses until the pandemic is over or decided by the Emergency Management Team, or how would we decide?
Can I amend the motion?
You can, there's not a second.
Can we take it up at the next city council meeting, which would be, what is it, April?
Sixth.
April 6th, so take it up on the April 6th meeting, and we can always extend it at that point?
I think that's a great choice. So we have a motion to close both boat accesses in the city limits of International Falls, and we will reassess on April 6th at our regular city council meeting. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councillor Deitch. Any discussion?
Mayor, I would just like to point out a couple of information pieces. The fishing regulations that apply on the bodies of water in front of each of these landings are different. So springfishing for walleye is allowed south of the dam, or west of the dam, rather, in International Falls on the Rainy River, so you can fish this spring, and that fact is the reason why I think the county, who from past years has seen the congestion at all of these landings, took the, made the decision based on the executive order and to try and keep separation, the closing of parks, that type of thing, to close their accesses so that we prevent that density and people being all in the same place and being problematic that way. They did reach out to the DNR, and the DNR chose not to do anything about their few landings. However, for all the fishermen that formerly had gone to the county landings are now going to be concentrated at any of the DNR ones that might still be open, or ours here in International Falls, west of the dam. So we, at a staff of, or me, we have serious concerns about the congestion, about being able to get emergency vehicles in there, as well as just daily traffic by that particular landing, because the parking spaces are limited, particularly given the demand that there seems to be in some of these spring landing locations. So I just wanted to make that point. Secondarily, the landing at Pat Roach, or the Pat Roach Landing, which is east of the dam in International Falls, the fishing regulations that apply to that part of the water are the same as they are on Rainy Lake. So we don't expect that there's going to be a lot of traffic at that particular landing because, until the fishing opener for walleye opens up in early May. So we have some time, I think, before that one is, we don't have as many concerns about that being congested and the same level of problems, but I think it's appropriate that they both be closed and handle that, because again, the governor's action was to close, you know, the parks for public use as well, so.
Right, and one of, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, may I, Administrator Anderson, I might point out that fishing at the Pat Roach Landing is absolutely open right now and does not close until April 14th, as is the walleye season on Rainy Lake is open until April 14th. The difference is, you can keep fish on Rainy Lake, you can't keep fish on the river to Four Mile, from the dam to Four Mile Bay on Lake of the Woods. But Rainy is still open, and it will be until April 14th. It's a border water.
Yes.
Last year, weather affected farther west of International Falls, and Mayor Anderson called me on Saturday to go and open up Shorewood. Usually Shorewood doesn't get heat, so if Shorewood's open and Pat Roach is open, the other ones are closed, I think you're going to see both of them in again, so.
And I agree. I just think that, especially with the information that we've received, I think April 6th at our regular city council meeting to reassess moving forward, this is just a precautionary measure. I think it's a good choice. And again, with the way the motion is placed, we're going to be able to reassess in 10 days, so. Any other discussion on the closing of the boat landings? We'll do a roll call vote. We'll start with Councillor Deitch.
Aye.
Councillor Nelson, aye.
Councillor Kraus, aye.
Councillor Bowler?
Sorry, Walt, we can't hear you. Let's see, it's a galaxy. Try again. Walt? Yeah, I can see him, but he's on mute, but Walt, do you have your earbuds in?
Can he hear us?
He can hear us, yes.
Maybe a nod or something like that would be appropriate?
Can you, okay, he gave a nod.
Okay, so we're, and I will vote yes, so we will go with four for the motion and one not for the motion. It, motion passes. And then next would be the discussion of community compliance with executive orders. I did, I wrote a letter to the city administrator and the council members last evening, and I did send it out by email individually, so they all had a chance to look at it. The concerns that I have right now in our community is around food service and the COVID-19 pandemic. As I understood the governor's original executive order, which closed bars and restaurants and clubs and hookah establishments, bingo parlors, bingo halls, bowling alleys, movie theaters, it had said that we could do, for food service, we could do takeout, delivery, drive-through, or curbside. And what I've seen in the businesses in our community is the businesses have been trying to follow the letter of the law to the best of their ability, and they have done curbside, and I want to give extreme kudos to those that have locked their doors to do curbsides, such as the chocolate mousse. They have done a fantastic job. And those that are doing delivery service, all of our pizza places and the Coffee Landing has done delivery service, and I'm not calling out anyone specifically, but they have done such a good job on that. And the drive-throughs, Hardee's and McDonald's and Dairy Queen, our facilities that are set up for drive-through, they have been just incredible as well. The issue that I have is the goal in the governor's orders were to limit exposure for people gathering in groups. When we're doing takeout, that is not happening in our community, and it's not because the establishments are not setting up the correct protocols to do it. The problem is, we're a small, tight-knit community, and we all know who each other are, and we haven't seen each other in a while, and we can't help ourselves but to talk to each other. When I went to speak with the businesses in the last two days about this, every place that I was able to go into had groups of people sitting in there talking or standing there talking, having conversations while they're waiting for their food. So it isn't true takeout. It was come in, order your food, wait for your food to be prepared, which could be five minutes, it could be 15 minutes, it could even be 20 minutes. Wait for your food to be prepared, and then, once your food is prepared, you can leave, but you might have to talk to someone for another five, 10 minutes. I would propose that the restaurants, food courts, cafes, coffee houses, and other public accommodations offering prepared food or beverage for consumption are closed to occupancies of members of the public and only allowing curbside delivery, drive-through service, and off-site delivery. I did speak with... service, and off-site delivery. I did speak with every business in town with the exception of one yesterday, but the one that I, I did not speak to yesterday does have a drive-through, so I think it would eliminate a lot of the concerns. I just didn't make it out there. I did have a little bit of pushback from one of the businesses. However, this is temporary. This is not forever. They are still, would still be able to do curbside, they would still be able to do delivery, and I, I just think that it's the best thing that we could possibly do to eliminate that, that exposure. That is the first part of the ordinance that we have. And the second one is grocery stores, delis, convenience stores, gas stations, and essential services that have prepared foods available for public consumption must have all foods prepackaged. The reasoning for this is the gas stations, delis, bakeries have food where customers are able to come in and grab unwrapped food, whether it's donuts, or a hot dog on a rotisserie, or items such as that. There's been a lot of concern from staff at, at facilities that, that offer this, because they don't feel that it's, it's, there's other options that they could have. They could have the food prepackaged. If you want donuts, you can have prepackaged donuts. And the other one would be self-service beverages such as fountain soda or coffee, and the reason for that would be, people constantly are touching the same thing, and as the businesses are getting busy, the, the employees don't have enough time, especially on limited, limited staffing through this, to be able to clean and, and wash the stuff as well as possible. I did, I did speak with the city attorney. He is on, on today, and I would love to have him give his thoughts. We had a difference of opinion on this, but I think we did come to a joint resolution. But I would love to hear the city attorney's thoughts on this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. I think they've gathered for an emergency ordinance to be allowed under our charter. The key is that at least two thirds, the council feels that this is a necessary emergency for the immediate preservation of the public health. And after, initially in my call, I was thinking that the, the city would just be following the governor's order, and there would be a need for a specific ordinance for International Falls. But I think, hearing the mayor's explanation, that there appears to be a need to clarify or make more restrictive the order of the governor to protect the welfare of the citizens. So I certainly think that this proposed ordinance is allowed under our charter, provided that four of the council members feel that it is an emergency needed to protect the, preserve the public health in sixty.
Thank you, Steve. One of the, the questions that I had with Administrator Anderson before is, the way that I was looking at this is it would run in conjunction with the, the closures of the bars, restaurants, and the, the original order that the, the governor had had, and I had used the dates that he had used. Is there a better way that we could word that in the event that the, the governor stops the, declares that the pandemic is, is not as, as prevalent, and opens the bars and restaurants? Can, is there a way that we can word this particular resolution, or ordinance, that the timing would either go longer if the governor goes longer, or is removed when the governor removes the, the current executive order?
I think we could, and ready to say running true, may go through 2020, you could say running true, whatever date the governor places similar restrictions on these types of entities.
Okay.
Anyway, as long as there are the general restrictions that he has in place against restaurants and so forth, that, and I think right now, if one of the ordinances, like the April 10th, I expect that's gonna be continued for a longer period of time. It seems to me that it would be best if our restrictions, although they might be more specific, and clarify people not going inside of the buildings, that the timeframe would mirror whatever the state has. And then there's, there's one other, just kind of type of graphic called clarification or change, that I would suggest in number one, in parentheses, that says, staff to only enter buildings. And I would think would be better if we moved from two to after only, and say, staff only to enter buildings.
Okay.
I think from a, from an enforcement standpoint, that would be more clear. But otherwise, I, I think the ordinance is excellent. I'd recommend it to the council, but I, I think your suggestion that we alter the end date to mirror what the governor's doing would, would be better. We don't want a situation where we, because I'm not sure about, we can have an emergency to an act this ordinance, I'm not sure we can declare an emergency to, to end it. So we, we don't want to have our local bars and restaurants restricted for longer than the rest of the state.
I, I would, I would concur with that. Does, is there anyone on the council that would make the motion to approve the emergency ordinance with the recommendations of the city attorney? Chair would entertain that motion at this time?
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Kraus to adopt the emergency ordinance with the recommendations from the city attorney. Do we have a second?
One second.
Go ahead.
We have a second by Counselor Nelson. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Again, I just want to point out that I don't take this lightly, but I would also like to point out that we will have two city council meetings before a potential end, which would give us an opportunity to amend this as needed. We will have the, the regular city council meetings in April, so if we need to readdress this, we certainly could. And if something were to change, I would imagine that we could also hold a, an emergency city council meeting, much like the one that we're having today, to readdress any changes, if, if anything changes.
Right. Thank you. Any other discussion?
The only thing, the only hesitancy I had is, I do, I think it's necessary. It's just kind of one of those things that we just have to do. The self-serve kind of struck me a little bit, just because I do have truckers in my family, and they, I mean, anywhere they stop, they need, they need coffee to keep going. So I did have a little bit of hesitancy with that. But, you know, at the same time, if we don't remove that temptation, that's where people talk to you. I mean, anytime I've gone into the gas station and I'm getting coffee, someone's talking to me. So I, I completely agree that we need to do it. I just wanted to, to voice where that hesitancy was coming from.
Absolutely, and I've-
Excuse me, the last few minutes, you guys are really breaking up. I don't know if you're moving away from the microphones, or moving around, or something else happened, but it's really hard to hear right now, the last few minutes.
Yeah, you, you need to speak much louder, closer to the microphone, if you want to get through the microphone there, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Okay, so any other, any other concerns or thoughts on the, the ordinance, the emergency ordinance? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call for a vote.
Counselor Deach, yes.
Counselor Nelson, yes.
Counselor Kraus, yes.
Walt, please turn your camera on and nod if you have a second. We can't hear you. He's nodding.
All right. And I will vote yes. So we have four for the motion, one nod, yes. Motion carries. Next, we have the deed emergency loan program for Minnesota small businesses. I have not had a chance to really dig through this, but I know there's a lot of information that's been getting kicked out through the SBA and the emergency loan program. Ken, do you have anything to add to that, and on how we can utilize this for our community?
Mayor, this is, thank you, this is primarily informational. You know, a lot of our businesses statewide have been impacted by the closures and the changes that have been happening on a day-to-day basis. So I just wanted to make the council aware and the public aware that the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development has come out with a loan program to try and assist businesses that are, experiences these closures and a downturn in business. And so they, you know, some of this has been identified and referenced in executive orders from Governor Walz, but there are deed dollars that are available through their lender network to make loans between $2,500 and $35,000 for qualifying small businesses. It appears that some of the loans, or these loans, are 50% forgivable and offered at a 0% interest rate. So the terms are fairly attractive. If anybody has any interest in that, I would ask them to contact their financial institution, or KITA, or directly to the Department of Employment and Economic Development to find out how they might be able to access those monies.
Okay. With this being a special city council meeting, we can only deal with the business that is on our agenda. So with there no, being no other further business, at this time, we will adjourn. Our next city council meeting, our next scheduled city council meeting will be on April 6th at 5:30. Thank you.